On the pledge of allegiance at the town meeting. So, are there any additional agenda or consent calendar items? I'm not aware of any.
I'm not aware of any.
Okay. So, next is delegations and we do have an item two A, which is changes in the transfer station fees. So, I would invite any of those that are here to speak on that item to address us. Right, you can do it right now during public delegations. Yes, and just identify yourself.
Yeah.
Just write your name.
Write my name down, alright, cool.
Great, thank you.
Paul Spakowski, thirty-seven Mill Road, East Lime, Connecticut. I am speaking on the tipping fees for contractors for the leaves. Me, myself personally, I feel this is unfair fee to us contractors who have started with nothing and have advanced ourselves to the point where we just keep on adding on to our business to make our business better. And for this, not only do we get all these tax bills, which I have to pay and add up every year, but on top of that, then you're trying to add on, because we're contractors, now we're to the point where we're able to put a box on a truck, we're getting charged a tipping fee for bringing up leaves to the landfill. It's not fair to us, the time it takes to weigh in, to weigh out, to get checked in to keep track of all the monies spent for each customer. And it's not fair at all to the customers, the ones that we work for, that hire us, which could have their leaves picked up for free if they put in bags, but because they hire us and we chop up the leaves and bring up the landfill, they're getting an additional charge. It's not fair to us and it's not fair to these taxpayers. And not only the people who are working hard and they don't have time to do it, but there's the people who are not able to do it, that can't physically able to do it and they hire us. And because of this, because they hire me and I've got a box on my truck and I go to landfill, these people, these taxpayers are also getting charged. It's unfair fee all the way around and I ask you to reconsider as your one fee. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, Robert Carlson, sixty-eight Spring Glen Road. I pretty much back of what Paul just said, except for any contractors that might be coming in from outside the town. I mean, simply they don't let them in, or if they do come in, have them have a note from the homeowner saying, this is where they're coming from. I mean, my experience, you go up there, you just tell them the address, you know, where you're coming from. You really, if they're from outside the town and they're not taxpayers and they're saying they're coming from Corey Lane, they should have a note, something in writing to say that that's where they're from. Besides that, you know, like I said, it is, it's not all just about the fee, it's about, also about, you know, you have, like, like Paul said, you have to wait going in, wait coming out, it does nothing but back up the scale. If this has to get forced down, everybody, contractors have, if you do, two things. One, you really, it's not fair to say to the general public, you pay absolutely nothing and these contractors pay, you know, pay. Two, you know, then maybe you should charge people for the bag, pick up the bags too. Fifty cents a bag or some, charge them for that too. But, you know, it's not fair, but like I said, it's, you know, it should be, it's more of a nuisance as well and you really should consider East Lime contractors in this whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Adam McCaffrey, thirty-one Green Cliff Drive. I run a local business here in town, McCaffrey Property Services, and I heard that there was the leaf dump fee charged for last year, which happened towards the beginning, maybe just after the beginning of the season. So, we obviously pay the dump fees, but I wasn't able to up my pricing. You know, a lot of my customers, I'd say eighty percent of my business is here in Nyi Anik East Lime. Kind of going back to Paul and Bob, all East Lime taxpayers, people that aren't able to do it. And I understand that there's concerns of getting rid of the leaves and letting them sit, but I do think that there is plenty of space up top. I'm not opposed to some sort of dump fee if there are, you know, obviously the process of turning the leaves, you know, general overhead costs, but I, I think two and a half cents a pound is unreasonable for leaves. I did see in the memo that it's a seventy-five dollar max load fee per truckload. So, I'm not exactly sure how many leave, leaf loads we bring in per year, I would say at least fifty. So, that breaks out to about four thousand dollars per season. So, you know, that's something that we have to move to the customer, but also our pricing in general is increasing due to labor costs, general overhead, you know, all of our machine costs are going up as well. So, I'm not opposed to a charge if that means that there's a process in place for getting rid of the leaves or any general overhead associated with that, but I do think that two and a half cents a pound is a bit unreasonable. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you speak again?
Sure.
Paul Spakowski, once again. And then along with this tipping fee, this seventy-five dollar max, now, I've got just a small mason dump that I put on. Now, you have these other big roll-offs come in and they bring in, you know, ten to fifteen times the amount that I bring in on one load. And yet, so, it's seventy-five for them and it's seventy-five for me, and that's an unfair advantage all the way around. Myself, I recycle ninety percent of my leaves, I've got a pot of, a piece of farmland, I recycle ninety percent of my leaves already. The only ones I actually bring up to the landfill are the ones that are real close to the landfill, they're saving the trouble from going all the way up to the other side of town. And it's gonna be hard for me to judge, use my own judgment to, so who do I charge? Just the people that I'm right local next to the landfill and not charging the people? Or do I charge all the people altogether? It's leaves me an unfair advantage as what to do. So, I just not, not see any fear at all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to be heard during public delegations? Thank you for your comments, we appreciate it. We'll move on to approval of the minutes.
Move, let's see, move to approve the regular meeting minutes of June fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any commentary on the minutes?
Yeah, I wanted to make an amendment for that. It should read under item two D for the park and rec ARPA funds, special appropriation, it should read as follows. Move to approve a special appropriation of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from remaining ARPA funds to a new account to be named parks improvements.
So, that's a correction to the junta?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other comments or corrections?
I'm sorry, because it says place gate improvement, you want parking.
Was?
It was more the, the fact that the amount, we, we had, what was in the, what I had read was the wrong amount. So, this is appropriation of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
So, we're correcting the amount from the original bands?
Yeah.
Good.
Alright. Any further discussion? None? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. Next is the meeting minutes of June nineteenth.
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four submitted.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I'll second, alright. Any discussion on the June nineteenth minutes or corrections? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. Motion's carry. Next on our agenda is the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for July third, twenty twenty-four in the amount of three hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion being done? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, we're gonna turn to new business and the first item is discussion of possible action change in transfer station fees and we just heard commentary from leadership members of the public. Joe, you have?
Yeah. Joe Bregaud, Director of Public Works. And I appreciate and respect all the contractors and it's a perfect process and I explain to them, public meeting, this is the board of, Board of Sustenance is the governing board in town, they do the fees, so that this is where we can talk about it. We have the memo in front of you and not everyone here has a memo, but I kinda like to take this in two, there's two things on here. There's the commercial garbage fees, which isn't these guys' commercial, there's the dumpsters, the CDO PMs and the things they're picking up. What happens with that is in town, when you put your garbage can at the side of a road or if a business has a garbage can, they roll it out, it gets dumped, no one pays for that, it's, well, the taxes pay for that. If you have a dumpster and you're a business in town, you, you hire a commercial contractor to pick it up, they dump it into the truck, the CDO PM are also all waste, they bring it up to Lisbon, the incinerator, and when they get there, they say, I'm from East Lime, this trash is from East Lime, they put it on our bill, we get sent the bill for that trash, and then we get a list of all those loads for those general commercial contractors. They get charged the same rate as us, but almost all other towns charge administrative fee on top of that and we've been doing that all along. The problem right now is, and the First Sustenance and some of the other people on the board might have heard, is that trash in the area and the whole region, the cost of garbage is just going to the roof. So, the next five years, our tipping fee is gonna be going up ten percent from Scara. So, I wanna keep up with this commercial fee so that we don't start getting behind on revenue for this source. So, the second paragraph in this is we wanna propose to increase the fee that we charge commercial trash contractors, landscaping contractor, from sixty-six twenty-five that we're presently doing now, to seventy-two twenty-one, which is basically that five-dollar surcharge on top of it. So, I don't know how, how you guys wanna vote, but that's one, that's one part of it. The second part of this, the three parts, is the bulk, the three biggest things that come into the transfer station, now we're back to the transfer station, the three biggest things that come in are bulky waste. What bulky waste is, is anything that can't go into your trash can. Your trash can at the side of the street is municipal solid waste, it's, it's really supposed to be a household hazard, excuse me, household waste. So, if you have garbage in your house, that goes in there. Demolition debris, if you're, if you're redoing your house, you shouldn't be putting sheet rock in there, you shouldn't be putting all kinds of debris in there. It shouldn't be stacked seven feet above the can, it's, that's all bulky waste. All that then gets brought to the transfer station as a user fee. And that's, we get charged, so when you bring bulky waste up to the transfer station and you say you got bulky waste, they tell you the bin, they roll you around, you get charged that. The town gets charged, that, we have to haul that to the CDO PM in New London and we get charged a hundred and five dollars a ton to dispose of it. So, every year, those fees go up, so we try to keep these fees up. And some towns aren't really keeping up with the rates that they're being charged, that's a, that's a, that's a decision that they're making, but they're losing money by this. This is a user-based fee, you bring bulky waste to the transfer station, it's gotta keep up with the cost that it's costing the town to dispose of it. So, each year, we're only talking going up half of a cent, from ten and a half cents to eleven. That's the, that's one of the biggest things. There's, I said three things, the second one is debris, that, that we're looking to keep the same, and the third is leaves. So, now we're kinda transitioning to the last one, the leaves. So, everyone knows that we have a curbside collection in the fall, where if you, you know, I live here or someone else, anyone, residents of town, you can bag your leaves, put those bags and the town will come out, we put on our website, we start usually the first week of November, we go out until the snow flies and we pick up everyone's leaves. There is also commercial, that's where we're getting to the commercial contractors, so the landscaping contractors, they have all their accounts and I appreciate that and we know the, if you go up there and Adam said, you know, he might do, he said, and I, I don't know the exact number, but I know if you took it like, and now we have cameras up, you can see how many trucks, they're constantly coming in there. We get inundated with leaves with, now, I understand right now we're not charging people for the bags and stuff like that, but especially when it gets late in the season and it starts coming in, there's a lot of these coming in and for the smaller contractors, and I feel and what, how, I have a solution that we probably could do, but the smaller trucks, it's not as big a deal. We get forty yard, someone's mentioned some of this, I think you mentioned some, we get truck, forty yard roll-offs, they're huge and eight of them a day, I mean, they're just keep coming. When those leaves come in, we have to take them, it takes about three years to, cause it's a transfer station, transfer, everything that comes in has to leave. So, when those leaves go in there, they go up top and someone said there's plenty of room up top, well, that's nice and all, but you still have to take in this humongous pile of leaves every year and then the next year you have this pile. We've been, we have to turn those leaves, we have to process them, there is more, we've been renting equipment to try to process them and I think, again, Adam, it's just, it'd be nice to get them out. The ultimate goal is to let people get them for free to go out the door as compost, but that takes three, four years of a lot of work and equipment to do, so we could just, I don't even, I mean, we could just continue to have this mount leaves back there and not process it, but it's, with the amount, as busy as that place is, we're just trying to control the amount of leaves coming in. So, that then tends to the question. Bob said something, Robert said something about, we'll have people give a letter, so I, I mean, most of these contractors, it's not one house that this truck is full of leaves and again, I understand the smaller, smaller trucks, it could be, you know, maybe two things, but these bigger bins, these forty yard bins, it's gotta be six, five, six yards, I mean, it's a lot of leaves. How do we know they're from East Lime? I mean, they, New London does not take, allow contractors to come in now. Waterford has the same problem and I talked to their public works people, they get inundated. So, where are these leaves coming from? A good portion could be coming from East Lime, but if they're not, we're having to deal with it and have this cost and all this time and three years of all this leaves for, you could, so, I don't know if there's a outside, you know, I heard also, you know, don't charge East Lime contractors if we could do that, but we have contractors from out of town, there could be some from Legerd from all over that are bringing them to East Lime's transfer station, who knows that they're from East Lime yard. So, part of this is a deterrent, so we don't get inundated with these forty yard roll-offs. So, that's my pitch, I'm not trying to penalize any of the contractors, I just, when we put the two and a half cent charge, it turns out to be fifty dollars a ton for leaves. A ton of leaves is a ton of material and that's all, I mean, if someone's normal house, they, they mostly, unless you have a humongous yard with a zillion trees and stuff like that, that's a lot of leaves. And part of the process is by bringing this up and I apologize to the contractors last year when we did it later in the fall, but we're sitting here on July first where no one's picking up leaves. If, if the contractors know in advance, if this board so chooses to do that, they will know that in their rates, and again, I get it, you know, cost of everything's going up, but they will know that, hey, customer, this is the charge that's being levied by the town as far as going, so that, so in conclusion of what I'm saying is that we have the commercial contractors like that, I'd like you to vote on that some here. The only thing that's really being increased, the bulky waste by half a cent, we're also looking to bump up the bulky waste pickup fee, so I don't know if you guys are aware of this, if you have like four items at your house, if you have a refrigerator and a table and a couch and a sofa and a, I don't know, dining room table, you can't get rid of it, you can call the town and they'll pick it up, but that's not for free. I mean, we had to send two guys out as a truck and stuff like that, so we charge, we've been charging up till now seventy-five dollars for five items and a hundred and twenty-five dollars for ten items. And, you know, I get from people, well, it should be free, well, we're, you know, if anything, it helps the contractors out because, you know what, you could go to a contractor, you go to us, I mean, but it's just like, it's still, there is a cost to it and if you want the town to do it, you know, it's a user fee and we actually get probably fifteen, twenty requests a month. So, from April to October, we might have eighty pickup runs, but we, we do them all on the fourth Wednesday of the month, so they're all at the same time. So, if we had to send out six or eight guys all at once, they all bang it out and they're done by noon and they're done for the month. It's not like as it used to be, you know, someone would call up and now someone had to stop what we're doing, oh, this guy has a refrigerator and, and a couch, we had to run out there, that's not really effective planning. So, now people know it's the fourth, two, fourth Wednesday of the month. So, this is the proposed fees. One of the things that I still think we should do a leaf charge, one of the things that this board might wanna consider, if you don't, if you hear these people, maybe if you'd make that charge for anything of a forty yard, any roll-offs, anyone's putting stuff in roll-offs, which I think is none of these guys, they're bringing in a lot of leaves, that's a lot of leaves, but, I mean, to drop off six or eight of those a day to us is, so, there, there should be some kind of charge to that or else we're just dealing with massive amounts of leaves, so I'll open it up to you guys' comments.
Okay. So, do we reserve the right to turn these very large commercial dumps away?
We can't right now, cause we work at the Board of Sustenance and if you guys say you need to take them, I mean, there's nothing saying we can't take them right now, so we have to take them.
Okay. So, we could, we could limit that or say no?
I mean, we could say no roll-offs. You know, everyone knows, I mean, roll-offs big, I mean, and the problem is, there could be ten yard, twenty yard, but they're big. Most of these guys that I'm all looking at have box trucks, yeah, they're, they're not, I mean, it, it might be, we're not looking to make some gold mine of money and all, but it does, it's, it's, it is revenue to town, but it's also a little bit of deterrent that we're not getting inundated with this extra cost, which towns and departments should be looking at, that we're not incurring this cost for user-based patterns. Yes?
If New London, you said doesn't let contractors come in?
They're not, yes.
Then, do they discompany East Lime or, I mean, where do these other, you know what I mean?
That's the, that's the, that's kinda the rumor, I, I don't know, but there's no way, if, if there's a contractor, if it's Twigs and Springs from Legerd and they pick up people in New London, they could drive to East Lime, I mean, who's, what's stopping them? We have those trucks coming there. I mean, and this, I, I'm just not a big fan of the honor system of, can you get a letter from someone and say it's from, I, it just, we're not gonna, is that where, you know?
That just takes more time for you.
And one element I did, I was trying to jot down some notes about, they're saying the time, and I hope they appreciate this, we just spent a big investment of effort into that facility, the, the efficiency getting in and out of there is three times as quick now, the new scale house and riding up, you get in and out, I mean, I don't know how much these guys have gone through there yet, but it's much quicker experience to get through there, so I, I understand time is money for these guys, but it's, it's not, it's, we're moving people through at a much faster clip in that facility, the way, the way we laid it out.
Is there a way that, and I'm just asking this question, we can charge the roll-off, what are they called, roll-off trucks and charge less for the, you know, the smaller contractors?
I mean, you could. I, I just threw that out there because honestly, I'm just being straightforward, the roll-offs are the biggest issue.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I'm hearing, so.
The two issues I have, the roll-offs and the fact, and I think all these guys would agree, is like, cause they're local contractors, he brings up his bills and if eighty percent of his clients are from East Lime, we're trying to do a service for East Lime.
Right.
Yeah, understood.
Absolutely, but what's stopping other towns and, and forty yard roll-offs from coming up there and just inundating us with leaves that we're gonna have to spend five, ten thousand dollars over the course of three years and trying to grind the stuff and not, I mean, time, it's, it's a big effort to get it out the door.
How much do you, how, how much you would charge roll-offs now?
Nothing.
Nothing?
We've been, those come in and says, thank you, roll right in, cause we can't have a fee, cause the Board of Sustenance didn't approve it. All our fees are based on your board and this check right here is a mirror copy of what is actually printed at the gate.
Can I get a copy of that?
Yeah.
It's on the back of.
It's, it's on the back of the memo.
Stay tuned, stay tuned.
There it is.
Alright. So, yeah, no, we should be either charging or not allowing them to come in.
I mean, that's why we put the max load cost and I, Paul made a good point, I mean, whether, he's got a smaller than one, but his load just happens to be seventy-five dollars and the forty yard roll-off is seventy-five, I, I, I actually don't know what the best answer, except that this board, you know, usually you try to put your mind to it, we're trying to deter the leaves coming out, from out of town and also just getting inundated in, it's just how to do that.
Sure.
So, how much, I just, just, I don't know, how, how much in a box truck, like, compared to like, you know, these roll-offs, like, how much would you have typically in a box truck?
Well, if they're saying, I mean, what, what do you? The problem with leaves is like eight yards is, depending if it's dry and wet, it's like two separate equations, so, you know, I mean, everyone knows them, what's that?
It's in ballpark, just so we have like an, an understanding, cause I mean, I, I just don't think it's.
Yeah, so if they were getting, if they were getting, it must be a few tons that you were bringing in, right?
For a load?
Yeah.
I mean, if it's dry, you're probably at eighteen hundred ounce.
Yeah. Just under a ton, which would be forty dollars or forty-five dollars, you said you were, your loads were like seventy-five?
I brought in loads when they were left that were two hundred and twenty-five dollars, one and a half, two and a half, four and a half.
Yeah. There absolutely, absolutely should be a cap, cause they should, no one should be penalized for a wet, wet leaves.
Mr. Bregaud?
Yes?
It sounds like no one on this board wants to hurt local contractors who are supporting local people.
Nor do we.
I think we all kind of can agree that there should be a threshold. I think drawing where that threshold would be is gonna be difficult if we're not operating with, I don't wanna say concrete values, but we're kinda ball parking it right now and I think to get this right, we're, we're gonna need some data or some information. Is it difficult to get that information somehow and get it over to us, or do we have to make a decision on this ball parking it?
What kind of information do you want, maybe?
Well, the gentleman here was telling, well, sometimes it's, you know, over our tons, sometimes it's just undered and we're not entirely sure how much, you know, one of our, our own contractors brings versus how much someone from outside is bringing. So, I'm just trying to find out, like, this is gonna be a balancing act, but we don't know where the middle is, we don't know where it's on either end.
So, the best way to answer is that all these fees here, you could approve all of them, but that one at this time and we could try to work something out. This fee does not have to be set today, I mean, cause, I mean, the leaf season, I'm assuming is, I mean, you might, it is more for these guys in October, November, December.
Yeah.
And it probably is not a bad idea, I get it, but I just don't know how much information, you say ball parking, because last year we started doing this, but it wasn't approved by the board, so we just put a kibosh on it right away, so we didn't really get a lot of good data of what those weights are and as these guys are saying, it, it's really speculative, is it rain, is it, was it a rainy week in this, you know? I mean, leaves are three times the weight when it's wet than they're dry. So, it's, it's always gonna be kind of a little bit of a ball parking of what that is, is, are you guys looking for a, a threshold of what, I mean, if you give me some parameters or what?
These are people's livelihoods and we're making decisions about this, it's, it behooves us to be well informed, that's all I'm saying, and the more data we have, the better decisions we can make, I guess is what I'm asking.
So, what I'd like to do is just propose that maybe we have a separate meeting, you come in, we sit down and we kinda go over some of the information a little bit more. What I've gotten from you is that some of these larger dumps that are coming in, six, eight times a day, that's, it's just way too much, you can't keep up with it.
The large, the large loads.
Right. And then they're coming in for free, so I would, I would probably think that they're, they know that they're gonna be able to come to free here in East Lime, so they shouldn't be coming in for free, if they're coming in at all. So, if you can't keep up with the leaves and it's taking or giving such an issue, then we just say, no, you're not coming in, go somewhere else, or you charge them significantly. I don't know what that charge would be, that's something that maybe we could talk about moving forward. And then maybe taking, lessening the load fee, maybe for some of the general contractors that are coming in, so if they're coming in and the gentleman in the back, if he's dumping a small load and he's getting charged two hundred and twenty-five dollars, that's a, that's a lot.
Yeah, which, this is obviously putting a cap on it, so, so, I hear you and if you, if the board is, we can take that element out of here and maybe tackle this in like September or something, I mean, it's before, cause we're right in the middle of something right now, but that would give me time to actually reach out, I mean, the contractors, if they wanna give some opinion, there's gotta be something, it sounds like, and it's good for the contractors to hear you guys, it sounds like the board knows something should be done, they don't wanna penalize local contractors, what is that, as, I, I'd rather kinda work with these guys to try to say, okay, this is what we're thinking about.
Yeah.
And then come back, but get some input on that, so.
And I just don't wanna just throw a few things out on the table and boom, at the end, this is what we're gonna move along with, that's not, that's not really the way that I like to work, so if we could just sit down and have a general discussion about it and kinda see what's best for East Lime and then move forward from there, I think that that would be good.
I, I would also, if it's helpful to have a representative from the board join you at these conversations, I'd be happy to, you know, put my name out there.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, and they can always, I'm kinda starting to use, but I mean, they, the contractors can always reach out to us at publicworks@yelltownhall.com and like comments and stuff like that, but we are truly open, I'll reach out to as many contractors as we could to tell them the meeting, we appreciate this public process so that we're not trying to Yeah, I mean, I, and they can always, I'm kind of starting to use, but I mean, they, the contractors can always reach out to us at publicworks@yelltownhall.com, and like comments and stuff like that, but we are truly open, I'll reach out to as many contractors as we could to tell them the meeting, we appreciate this public process, so that we're not trying to slide something in, if anything, I wanna get it right, too.
Yeah.
But there's, there's a problem, and we're trying to fix it, it's just that we don't have the perfect answer, so we, we can work on that, and Jason, thank you for bringing that up, I can, I'll reach out to you if we can.
Yeah, I can, that would be a good idea.
We can help.
Yeah.
I have a question, too, or a comment, I don't wanna interrupt anyone else. No, um, so, how much is a pound of feathers weigh? A pound, right, but it's, it's that kind of a situation, so, if, if you've got wet leaves, if, if, if what you're measuring it, it is on the weight, um, the weight really isn't a problem for the landfill, it's the volume of the leaves. And so, uh, the leaves will dry out if you dump wet leaves there, so we're really, I think we're really concerned more about the volume, 'cause that's what you need to deal with when you're moving the leaves around, and, um, maybe, you know, the divining, uh, rod here is those box cars, the, the big, the roll-offs. It sounds like that's what's problematic, that's creating an incentive for people to show up in New London, and we're not gonna take your roll-offs, but, ah, there's a bunch of suckers out in East Lime, we're gonna put that out there, and we're gonna drop the, the roll-offs there, it's creating a big problem for you, 'cause this has become a place for people, they don't even get rid of their roll-offs. Now, I, can I ask, I would, if I could just ask those in the audience, how many of you use roll-offs? Do you use a smaller box car, or do you use roll-offs?
I have a smaller, it's a smaller roll-off, I would say it is sixteen yard capacity, it's not a forty yard can, but it is a larger box car.
Okay, but it's the forty, it's the forty yard, and, and what I think Mr. Stokowski had mentioned was, you know, sometimes I'll go somewhere else, because it just isn't cost-effective to go with my small box of leaves to go to the landfill all the way across town, right, am I understanding it right? And, and so, those, uh, people that are transporting these large, uh, roll-offs, they're, they're willing to come from a greater distance to dump them off in East Lime, and that's, um, so I think that's contributing to the problem, and maybe we can control this and keep everybody, uh, happy here, if we ju, if we limit somehow the large roll-offs, either one alternative of saying, "You're just not welcome here, don't bring them in here," or we charge them a fee that's, uh, so it makes it cost-effective for you, Joe, when you're dealing with the labor to, to move these leaves around, so, and then we leave the smaller, uh, boxes alone, so that it's not impacting, uh, the livelihoods of, of the, the smaller contractors in town here. Maybe, maybe that's a way to.
Yeah, 'cause there are small contractors, but there's definitely contractors that, that, there's no way that that whole load is East Lime.
Right.
Right.
They don't like, okay, this is East Lime, I mean, so why are we taking Waterford's leaves, or O'Lyne's leaves, or anywhere else, 'cause it's in there, that's, so.
Right, right, right.
Joe, uh, Paul or Adam, Mr. Coggins, the, are, is there any company out there that has roll-offs that say, "Bring your leaves here," and you dump them there, and they take care of it? Like, one large distribution place where you, you know, that wants it and can go dump them here for free, and charge you for it?
No, no one wants them. No one wants them.
Nobody wants them.
Okay.
Farms will take them, they will use them as mulch, so there are a couple.
You know, it'll take them three, five years to turn into mulch.
Yeah, I mean, they'll, they'll use them, they use them primarily in paper garlic, but a couple of their crops are, you know, provide some, but.
So, it's on a small scale?
It's a much, it's a much smaller scale, it's a much smaller scale, there's not a large, um, transportation that takes, you know, a large amount of leaves.
Yeah, not, not a lot of roll-offs either, right, right.
I would just like to put out there for the audience and for this board to keep in mind that large businesses grow because, um, the people behind them are clever and resourceful, and we might create a bigger problem by trying to fix this problem, like, say, we say, "Okay, you can't bring a big roll-off," they'll say, "Oh, okay, we'll bring three smaller roll-offs," and we'll still have the same problem, but then we'll have more traffic and more wait time for contractors, so I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that this will be a moving target, and, uh, we need to kind of think comprehensively about how to solve this. It's not, I don't think it's gonna be a matter of, you know, saying, "Oh, well, instead of two and a half cents, we'll charge these guys three and a half cents," I think it's, it's, it's a big issue, right, like, this is.
Yeah, and I would, I would navigate carefully with the fees, just, fees across the board and across town in all different levels, they're going up, so that's impacting people, um, in many different ways as business owners, so we're talking about leaves at the moment, but we could also be talking about something else. They're increasing, and a little bit actually adds up and adds up and adds up and adds up, so people are really feeling the pinch on the fees that come through, that we're like, "Oh, it's only gonna be fifty cents," or, "Oh, it's only gonna be a dollar, maybe a five dollars," but it is adding up, um, not just on the homeowner, but on businesses as well. So, I, I really do think that the best answer is to have a separate discussion, uh, come out with, um, a good outcome, and, and try to limit what we've got coming in, um, limit fees, and, um.
Procedurally, how do we do that? Do we need a motion to table this, or just, it's a discussion, we discussed it?
Can we approve part of it?
Well, just, just to let you guys know, we're losing money if we don't approve the other fees, 'cause especially the commercial contractor's fee, that we, our fee just went up two days ago, ten percent, so we're not charging anymore, so that, that one is pretty critical, 'cause we need to get word to the contractors.
So, if we can bifurcate it somehow, and, uh.
Well, I, I, my recommendation would be approve as proposed everything but the, but that one fee, and then go back to, so everything else, 'cause I don't, I don't hear any other issues.
So, accept it on line four?
The, approve the fees, all the fees as presented in the, in this document, minus, minus, uh, the, the line four, the fees for the contractors, and then we'll, um, table that for another time.
All right.
I agree.
Move to approve the revised transfer station, minus or excluding the fees for leaves drop-off by contractor.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would be interested.
All right, let me, let me take a stab at it, okay, move to approve the revised transfer station and commercial trash fees, excluding the fees for, uh, leaf drop-off by contractors, in the memorandum from the Director of Public Works to the Board of Selectmen dated June twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Does that?
Yeah, no.
You're good, okay.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and before, um, when are the fees effective, did I, did I say that?
Seven, four, it's on the head, on the header.
Okay, so, so they'd be, they'd be effective as of tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I just want, you always need to know a date that they're effective.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for getting our attention.
So, I would say effective then July fourth, twenty twenty-four, I would add that in to amend the motion to say that also.
Okay.
Okay.
And, all right.
Any, any further discussions on the matter? Being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Being none, the motion carries as, as summoned.
The only other thing I was gonna say is, I, I'd wanna make sure that you definitely get back here by September, so that everybody will know, is that early enough for the contractors to, to know where it's gonna be, so we have some kind of resolution by September?
Yeah, if we shoot for the first meeting in September, um, it just, August gets, I mean.
No, no, I understand, I'm just trying to make sure, does that work?
I don't have to deal with the first meeting.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so that's good, so then.
Yeah.
That's what I figured, September should, I'm, I'm not that.
Yeah, that's perfect. Okay, I just wanna make sure.
We can think it through and get some information, some feedback, and some data, and, uh, can we noodle it here and figure it out, and come up maybe with something that, that works for everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Is that good with you, Joe?
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Great.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you, thanks for your input.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for the perspective.
There's a presentation on the East Lime Patagance sidewalk project.
Good evening, everybody, Alex Close, Town Engineer, I think, uh, presented to most of you, but not all of you, so if I haven't seen you yet, nice to meet you in person.
I know.
Um, so, yeah, this, um, the East Patagance sidewalk improvements is a, uh, load sip project that we applied for, uh, like, a couple of years ago now, and I presented this to the previous board, um, when we made the application, um, and I think Sandy, you passed out a quick, um, sketch of the area that's been highlighted.
I'm passing it around.
Okay, perfect, so, and it was in the email, yeah, so, um, I prefaced this to say, I wanted to give you all just a quick synopsis and get you caught up to speed to where we are with this project, with the intention that in August, we, uh, for the August meeting, between now and then, we send out letters, um, in coordination with the Town Planner, Gary Geisell, we send out letters to the abutters along East Pat, um, and in the surrounding neighborhoods, inviting them to the board meeting, where I'll have a full presentation prepared, and we can, uh, discuss with the residents, um, that are actually invited, I mean, anyone can come to the meeting, but the abutters will actually get a notice in the mail that says, "Hey, we're gonna be discussing a, a sidewalk on East Pat." But before that meeting, I wanted to just kind of brief, get you guys caught up to speed with what's going on, so, um, we submitted a, for a state, a fully, this construction, fully state-funded, uh, local transportation capital improvement, uh, program, competitive grant application, uh, through the, our, our COG, SC COG, um, and we were, uh, actually awarded the, um, a commitment to fund from the state, uh, for a, uh, for the project, which is awesome. So, uh, it's a competitive grant process, and our project was selected, so, in the plan of conservation and development, the last one, they've, the, they've identified several, uh, areas where sidewalks would like to be put around town, through the planning commission, we took the P O C D, and we saw the opportunity to apply for the load sip grant, um, we, we figured that, uh, East Patagance would be a great place to start, so this project would be, uh, you can hand out, you see the blue sidewalk, this would be a sidewalk that runs along the, um, westerly side of East Pat, all the way from Route one fifty-six to Route one sixty-one. So, this project would include, uh, uh, reconstruction of the sidewalk from one fifty-six along the cemetery, to actually widen it, as you know, if you've walked over there, the sidewalk that there is very narrow and past the school there, and actually continue on that side all the way up to one sixty-one, and add a new crossing that would tie into the existing crossing at one sixty-one, so it'd be like an L shape that, you can see in the plan, that crosses, um, across East Pat, uh, with push-button pedestrian signals, and tied into the, to the signal at, at Route one sixty-one. Um, in addition to that, uh, it would be a full-depth reclamation of the roadway, 'cause the road, um, believe it or not, this road gets like fifty-five hundred cars a day, uh, it is a, uh, major collector road, one of the few that we have that is not a state road in town, because people use it as a bypass, right, to get around downtown, um, the road is holding up very well, but, um, uh, as part of this load sip, and because it's time to do it, and now's the time to do it when it's not the town's money, um, uh, but, uh, the D O T wants to see projects that'll result with a finished product, uh, of a roadway that'll last a twenty-year lifespan, so we're proposing a full-depth reclamation of the entire road, and a repaving of the road, and then in a couple areas, we'd actually realign it, so that way we, for example, at the cemetery, we can't push any closer to the cemetery, right, we have to go the other direction, so we'd do a slight realignment, um, in a couple other areas, to be able to provide a wide enough, um, total roadway width to encompass the sidewalk and the road. So, pretty intensive, um, project, it would be essentially a, an overhaul for all of East Pat, and it would include the, um, sidewalks with ADA-accessible ramps, restriping of the crosswalks, and a re-timing of the signal at East Pat and one sixty-one, um, all of that would be funded through the, a, a grant from the state of Connecticut, um, which is awesome.
It is.
So, yeah, so that's the project, um, and so, I said, I'm here for, A, to let you know that that happened, and we got the commitment to fund, which means essentially at this point, we go into final design review and bidding, and if the D O T and the COG approve the plans, they go to bid, and the bid, uh, comes back within, um, the budget, then it gets awarded, and, and the job gets constructed, uh, which is great. Um, we're looking at, at this point, in a perfect world, we'd be looking at this time next year, uh, if not, a year after that, just depending on how long it takes to finalize design and get through the review process, and get it to bid to a contractor, and line up construction schedules, et cetera, so we're looking like a year to two years. Um, the last thing I'll say, and then I'll take any questions, is, um, the piece of this, um, with the residents, is that the residents that live on the, uh, west side of the roadway there, most of them, uh, their property would not be impacted by the sidewalk itself or the construction. There are several that you see in the orange highlight that would be impacted by grading, because as you know, as you move towards one sixty-one, it starts to drop off very steep, right down to the river, and so, because of that steep drop-off, um, we would have to do, we'd have to, uh, work with the residents on a case-by-case basis, and get a construct, a temporary construction agreement, grading agreement with them, to say, "Yes, it's okay that you come on, you do this construction, you restore my driveway, you restore, um, you know, the grading that you've done, and the grass, and et cetera," right? Uh, and then, for even less residents, there are some that we may need an actual sidewalk easement, which is not uncommon, basically says, "We're going to build and maintain a sidewalk on your property, anyone can walk on the sidewalk, as long as they stay on the sidewalk, and we're gonna go and, and, you know, fix it if there's any problems," and then stuff like that, just like we do with all the other sidewalks in towns, and maybe some residents that we have to, uh, have an easement filed on the land records, that says that they give us permission to do that. So, that's where, um, you know, we would work on, work with residents on a case-by-case basis, if, whether or not their property's gonna be affected, or whether we can keep everything inside the right-of-way, um, so those are some of the things that we'd like to start that dialogue at the next meeting, and they'll have my contact information, and we can work through that process between now and, and submitting the final design, if that makes sense. So, that's, that's my, my spiel, like I said, I'll have a full, nice-colored presentation we can put up at the next meeting, but I wanted to give you all a heads-up, so you're not kind of getting blindsided at it, with it.
Yeah, this is really exciting, this is great, so, uh, when you're moving forward with that, will the people that are going to be affected be notified, that way they can come to the meeting, and be able to effectively do that?
We're gonna encourage everybody, um, including the adjacent neighborhoods as well.
Okay.
Um, you know, we're gonna send the letters out and say, "We, we highly recommend you come to the meeting," but it's, obviously, it's totally optional whether they come or not.
Yeah.
Um, and so, if there is a property that is, uh, that we believe is going to be affected, whether they come to the meeting or not, we're going to be reaching out to those individuals, right, 'cause we can't go and start this project, and I, I wouldn't feel comfortable with the final design until we've gotten a hold of the, the homeowner and had that discussion, and we're all on the same page. Um, so whether they come to the meeting or not, it's not really, the meeting, the purpose of the meeting would be more for, um, any resident in town, but, you know, with the, uh, I'd like to particularly hear from the ones that live on East Pat, 'cause here, if there's, um, if anyone has an issue with it, we know what those issues are, and we can be aware of them, so we're all on the same page.
Great.
Less so to work out, like, we're not gonna get into the specifics of grading and easements, that, that's not the intention of the meeting, that would be handled after that.
Got it, second part of my question is, what happens if a resident does not want any, um, movement on their property? What if they don't want it?
Um, we would try to do our best to, um, design around that, but that's, at this, that is, to my current knowledge, I don't, I don't, uh, I am not familiar enough without a conversation with legal in terms of what we can and can't do outside of the right-of-way.
Okay. Okay.
We certainly wouldn't wanna be in that situation.
No, we do not.
Homeowners to be happy, we want everybody to be happy.
I wanna know every time, okay.
Yeah, exactly, so, um, if it comes to that, we'd have to have that separate conversation, I can't answer that.
Okay, and then when you start the project, about how long does the project run?
So, we, we have an estimate, um, I've, I've estimated total start to finish, um, like, six months, um, to do it, that, that's, that's the, the construction estimate that I, um, when I was doing the design, have considered, again, we're, that was for, uh, I, I'd call it better than concept, it was more than a concept, but it certainly was not final, I'm actually in the final design stages now, and that will go back to, uh, D O T and the COG for, uh, review, and kind of get a better handle on the overall, uh, timeframe, but at this point, I would say, we're looking at six months of construction.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
And that doesn't mean that the road would be like shut down for six months, or, I'm talking like, start to finish, the whole thing, there's gonna be, um, uh, you know, sequential pieces to this, the nice thing I just wanna say about the reclaim, which we've done on several of the roads in town, is it's the most efficient way to get essentially a new pavement structure, 'cause the machine goes in and grinds everything up, and then we skim off the top and roll it and pave on top. We don't have to excavate the entire roadway, bring in all new material, which would add tons and tons of time, so the actual, um, roadway portion, where the traffic, where the traffic would be most obscured, would be a much, much tighter timeline for the actual paving.
Nice, okay.
Uh, versus just working in the shoulder and getting the sidewalk work done.
'Cause it is a tight spot, that, it's a tight spot, and then right at the top, it just falls in.
Exactly, exactly. So, I don't, I don't want you to take away and say, "Oh, my God, East Pat's gonna be shut down for six months," no, no, that's not the case, right?
Yeah, right.
That's not the case, um, that's one of the reasons we chose that pavement, uh, design method above, uh, any others, was for efficiency of getting it done, and, uh, as timely a manner as possible.
Very good, thank you so much.
It's a great project, you know, I just appreciate all your input and hard work on it, and, you know, sitting in my office, I, that's one of the things I get calls on, you know, repeatedly, are people very interested in improving the sidewalk infrastructure in town here, and here is this great project, that's really gonna connect some of the dots here with, uh, being able to walk in town, so, that's really wonderful, thank you.
Do you foresee any imminent domain?
Do you foresee any imminent domain?
Um, no.
Good. The, is it going to be a sidewalk or a bike way and a sidewalk?
Just a sidewalk.
Good.
Yeah, we, we just, we do not have the width or bike way. Yeah, we don't have the width for, and most of the road would actually remain as is and we would be adding the sidewalk from the existing edge of pavement towards the properties. And again, for most, we're just looking at temporary construction. Their property gets restored and the sidewalk itself is still within the right of way.
And the last question, thank you, is maintenance for after storms and things like that, will the homeowners still be, go out and have to shovel that sidewalk or rail carriers or whoever?
Homeowners in East Lime do not have a maintenance obligation in our ordinances. It's actually the Department of Public Works has to clear sidewalks in East Lime.
Thank you.
They have that nice machine, they do a pretty nice job.
That's good.
Is there a part of the year, you said it's going to take six months, I mean, does it have to be done like spring and summer or can it be done, you know, the project itself?
My, my goal would be to go from summer into the winter. Ideally, fall is a good time to work with a lot of concrete and we could get some of the paving stuff done, but there's not, we, we would want to get it done in one shot and not try to break it up through the winter. So whether it happens from spring to summer or whether it happens from summer into fall, we'd want to line it up in, in, in that window. We wouldn't want to have anything go through the winter time.
Okay, great. Yeah, no, I have so many people, the biggest issue is sidewalks. So I think it'd be great. Yeah, really excellent.
Great, thank you all. Appreciate it.
All right, thanks.
Well, that's exciting.
It is.
Okay, we next have a presentation on climate resiliency.
Patty Heller, the Chair of the Natural Resources Commission. The commission has been involved with Sustainable Connecticut since 2017 when it first started. And we achieved bronze certification in 2019 and then again in 2022. And this program has continued. We've gotten several grants. I think various people in the town have gotten about $77,000 through this program. And another aspect of the program that we can talk about now is they offer free resources to those towns that have become certified. That's why you bother to become certified. So we can, so they, one of the things that they did offer to us and we took advantage of it was a climate resiliency building workshop. And it's part of what we're going through now for third certification as a climate leader because I think this town has done an awful lot to deal with climate issues because we have a coastal component and we have an inland flooding component. And it's something that I think needs to have a, a lot of discussion. So as, as a resource through this program from Sustainable Connecticut, the Connecticut chapter of the Nature Conservancy ran the workshop for us. It, we, it was held April 15th over Zoom. We got about eight or 10 people, town people, volunteers, Nyat Main Street. I gave you a summary that I shortened up their report so you could read it quickly. If you want to read the whole report, it's about 47 pages and it's essentially a transcript of the workshop that happened over about three or four hours of discussion. The whole point of doing this was to get a variety of people coming at the, the issue of climate resiliency from different aspects, from Nyat Main Street folks to Julie Wilson from the emergency aspect. And we had zoning and planning involved. And I think the, some of the, the problems we've had with climate issues, particularly in this case, but others is we tend to be very siloed. And this was an opportunity for people who really don't interact, so at least for three or four hours over Zoom, to talk about what bothered them and what they thought was a high priority and what the town should be spending its money and time on. So the priority actions that, that they came up with are really a reflection of the people involved. It's not extensive, but I thought it was, it was a pretty good mix. And I'll just go over them really quickly. The, the priority actions, the first one was, and that was from Julie Wilson, to secure funding and complete installation of a communications tower to improve emergency response coordination. I think that highlights the fact that many of the people that had, were part of this and I've talked to other people is communication, especially during emergency situations, but even not so, that the various aspects of the, of the town need to have a little more opportunity to talk to each other, to find out what's going on, especially the things that, like climate change that kind of can happen very slowly and then all of a sudden the, the seawall in, in the town beach is gone and whoops, you know, we should have been dealing with this before, but you don't until you have a problem. So that was the first one. The other one, second one, and actually they're not really ranked, but in a sense, the ones that got the most discussion ended up on the top of the list. To reinvigorate the aquifer protection subcommittee of the zoning board, I think that because of the problem due to drought and increased development expansion, and that is just another issue that maybe the water and sewer department and the zoning commission need to talk to one another a little more completely to make sure that in drought situations that are going to become more common, that our, our drinking water is protected even when development is important and has to be done. We live on, on an aquifer and that puts us at a very vulnerable situation. Wish we had a reservoir like Groton where you could just put a whole fence around it and nobody touches it. And unfortunately, we build on top of our drinking water and that makes it a, a real vulnerable situation. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, I'm sure. The third thing here is access ways to incorporate alternate transportation systems to alleviate car traffic. I think people have said we have a parking problem. I think we have a car problem. The sidewalks are going to be great. I'm an avid biker. I've, I've lived in this town for 45 years. I love biking. I used to bike to work and I've been told it's too dangerous to bike down Main Street now. And I'm 71 years old and I still bike down Main Street and I think I should be able to bike down Main Street if I want to. I live on East Patagonia, by the way. So more sidewalks and, and fortunately, in the time after we did this, this workshop, the planning commission did adopt a complete streets policy. It's just a policy, but I think I, I looked at that as step one, say at least we're on, on record of saying that when we can, we're going to put sidewalks in when we can. They're expensive. I wish there was a sidewalk that went all the way from the book barn to downtown and all the businesses in between. And that's step one, get people out walking, get them biking when they can. If we had any kind of mass transit, that would be nice. The suggestion here was to have a train stop. I would love to be able to get the train here rather than in Sabro, but I think that's kind of a long shot. And well, you know, the Yale charrette maybe, maybe talked about it, but probably didn't. So mass transit might be something as a long off wish because every time there's any kind of event in, especially in Nyantik, but sometimes in other places, the traffic on East Patagonia is packed up forever. You can't get in, you can't get out. The other one is to explore potential for an energy campaign to increase deployment of solar panels to residential homes through a group buy. We did this in, in 2015. It was fantastic. Gary Goschall put it together. 70 people got, and we happen to be one of them, got our solar panels at, for wholesale cost because it was a group buy. And now that, that solar and a lot of other alternative technologies are, are more available, I think the town could do something about group buys, especially if it's affordable housing. They could have a, a community solar installation for that because a lot of the affordable housing is not really affordable, especially when you move in and the energy costs are too high and the maintenance costs are too high. And if the town could help some, some of this by offering a group buy or notifying these people when they move in that X, Y, Z is available to keep down their, their maintenance costs and energy costs. EverSource is supposed to do this. I don't think they do a very good job. I think the town has, could have a role in that. So that's just another thing. Perform an energy audit of every municipal building to see about energy costs. We are actually doing that. A member of the, the Natural Resources Commission has been working on that. That's another freebie that Sustainable Connecticut offers. Harvey Beeman is working with a professor at UConn, Amy Thompson, and with her students. And we've given them all of the, Joe very nicely helped us get all the information. And they've got this big computer program where they're going to analyze every single town building, figure out which ones are least efficient. It's taken forever because EverSource has been dragging their feet about getting back to, to us about it. So we're hoping in the next couple of months to have an analysis of every municipal building and what, what UConn's energy software says, this building is very efficient, this building isn't, so that you kind of can rank them and they'll know what's what. The last thing here is continue to identify and protect open space parcels. And I have to say the town gets A plus for that. The, the three purchased, the three properties we just purchased were really, that Hathaway property has been number one on, on the list for the Natural Resources Commission since I've been on it. The only gist on that in terms of climate is maybe we have to be looking, a lot of the open space is for recreation and other, and to some extent, the protection of the drinking water, which is number one. But as time goes on, we might be looking more for floodplain protection and coastal erosion around the marshes around, coming up from Rocky Neck. And those properties might be higher on the list for flood protection, for seawater intrusion into our salt, into our aquifer, into our drinking water. That's not happening now. It may not happen for another 10 or 20 years. But every time we make predictions about what climate change is going to do, five years down the line, we realize things are coming faster than, than we thought. So that's just something to kind of put on people's minds, that some of this floodplain protection and protection for saltwater intrusion into drinking water might become more of an issue that the town needs to be involved in than what would be the traditional open space, let's have a ball field, let's have a hiking area, or let's have an area that's, that shouldn't be built on because it's a cliff kind of thing. And last again is, is affordable housing, trying to put the affordable housing and keep it really affordable. And a lot of that has to do with where it is, how much damage it's going to, it's going to get from flooding, from hurricanes, from, from storms and how much their energy cost is going to be and whether the town could, could work on minimizing those so that the affordable housing is actually as affordable as it could be. So I thank you for the time. If you want the whole report, it should be published. I hope it's, it's up on the, on the website for the Natural, Natural Resources Commission. If it's not there, I'll check and make sure Mike Minso's going to put it up. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
I think there's a lot there. Thank you. And it looks like we've made progress in a few of the areas that you've identified.
Yeah, in the last couple of months even.
But there's a lot, a lot more to do and aquifer protection is key to, to the, to the town and interested in your, the issue of saltwater intrusion that you, you mentioned and hasn't been thought about too much, but I think that's a real danger and one that we need to be thinking about it now rather than 20 years from now.
Yeah, it's going to empty out Florida.
Yeah. Thank you.
And we shouldn't, we shouldn't have to deal with it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. The presentation by the pension board, that's going to be continued to another meeting. So we're, we're not going to be having that presentation tonight. And then item E, discussion of possible action services to community budget. You know, this is something that we've discussed before. The amount that we had to distribute was cut by the finance commission. And so now we have to reallocate the money that we do have available. And I was hopeful we could make some progress on that tonight. Roseanne's not here and I know she really wants to be involved in that. And I was hoping to have a couple of potential scenarios, handouts, but weren't able to put those together tonight. So I think we should probably continue this to our next meeting and then have a full, fuller discussion and a well-informed discussion and maybe come up with a way to at least, you know, distribute, find a way that we can distribute the money that we do have in a way that's fair to everyone. And I know Candace, you had some strong ideas about it and...
Yeah, to create a policy.
Yeah, and I think that's really important.
It would be a good start.
Don't know if we can get that done this year, but at least start it this year and maybe in the short term, but let's talk about, that's what we'll talk about.
To get ready for the next budget season would be smart.
Yeah, maybe, I think, I mean, that makes sense. And my worry is that people that were counting on this money are kind of hanging out there and I, but that's what we'll discuss at the moment when we have a full discussion on it. So, all right, so that'll go over. There isn't any old business, so we'll turn to ex officio reports. Do we have any ex officio reports, Jason?
Yeah, sure, I'll start down here. So the most pressing and immediate and exciting bit of information I have to share with you comes via the Parks and Rec's Summer Concert Series. There's a band playing this Friday called the Antero Bangs, which features Dan and me. So I just want to let townspeople know it's going to be a great time. Come see our show.
What time is that?
It is seven o'clock on the 5th at the band show.
I'll get you backstage pass and, you know, I introduce you to the band, whatever.
Okay.
We'll sign autographs.
Yeah, yeah, hold on.
I went to the Brookside Farm Museum. I missed the last meeting. However, the second part of a concert series is happening there this Sunday at 2:00. There'll be food trucks and two musicians are performing in the barn there. It's free, everyone's invited, family friendly, nice way to spend the afternoon. Lastly, the Stars to STEM, organization running the planetarium out of the high school is having a meeting on July 11th at 11:00 at the planetarium to kind of plan the next stages. So that's all I have to share.
Thank you. I guess we'll just go down the line. I'll go next then. My report is a couple of things. We went live and we've implemented what we call the Munis payroll system, accounting system for our finance department. And this is a long-term project and it's finally been implemented and a lot of training has been going on to the various departments so they can request purchase orders and get bills paid and payroll can be processed now. And it really ties together a lot of the financial information and will make us more efficient and we'll be able to count, keep track of the money in a much better way. The other thing that's been hanging over our head in town for a couple of years now is the 2022 fiscal year federal and state single audits. They have been filed and accepted and so that is completed and we are already starting to work on 2023. And hopefully by November, we will be up to date and current with all of the audits facing the town of East Lime. So very pleased to report that. And Kevin Gervais worked very, very hard on that and he got it done. And so we're, we're going to be, we're going to get out of the woods on that. Yep, pretty soon. And let's see, one other thing. I guess that's it for me. Jason mentioned the concerts. All right.
Did I steal your thunder?
No, 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 that's good. I think that's it for me.
I don't, I don't have anything to report.
Okay, well, I'll go to the Samuel Smith House. We're going to have an open house on July 20th. They'll be down at Celebrate East Lime. They have some events with some authors coming up in July. And then the Connecticut Lime Revolutionary Encampment is coming on August 17. Uh, and then the Connecticut Line Revolutionary, uh, encampment is coming, uh, on August seventeenth. So, they're quite busy. Uh, Youth and Family hired Leanne Pappas for, uh, their new mental wellness, uh, coach, which I, I'm hearing she's gonna be hitting the ground running. I think it's gonna be great, great fit. Um, National Night Out is coming, August third, so plan for that. That's gonna be over at Flanders School. That'll be an incredible time. Um, if nobody noted, the fun runs just started down at the Black Sheet. That's always a fun time. So get out there and enjoy your time.
Good stuff.
I have nothing. Um, I have a new knee, so I've been off the last two weeks, so I'll be showing you out at the concert. Showing you all at the concert for, for...
Yeah, I saw you over at Arthur Murray the other night.
No, you didn't.
You're doing great.
Not before or after.
Yeah, there's one more thing I was gonna mention and I wanted to, to recognize and thank Sandy. Um, we, uh, today, we, we had like a, a picnic lunch, uh, right here in this room for all the town employees. And Sandy organized it. She made it happen. It was all her idea. She twisted my arm, made me think it was a good idea and it really was. And, uh, no, and it was enjoyed by all. And you know, one of the things, if I accomplish anything in, in, while I'm here, uh, is to really, really try to change the office culture a little bit, really get everybody working together. And it's those types of things that, that really do that. And we enjoyed each other. It was like a big family. And, uh, you, you can't ask for any more than that, so, in a workplace. So, it was really great. And thank you again, Sandy, for making that happen.
You're awesome, Sandy. Before you end though, Dana, I just need to go back because I sent an email about, um, possibly having a mental wellness fair for town employees. So is that something that we can maybe have some talks with Sarah about? Um, I think it would be good.
Great idea.
Yeah, okay, great.
Yeah, no, let's, let's, uh, see what else we can do.
Great.
Uh, let's see. That really was my first documents report. One and the same. Any, any communications? Yes?
Yeah, well, because I just wanna say thanks for listening and, uh, hopefully we come to a fair resolution before fall time and, uh, we get this all behind us.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for coming in.
Okay, so that was public comment, I guess. No Sluckman's response really. And, uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn the June, no, move to adjourn the July third, twenty twenty-four regular meeting of the Board of Selectment at eight thirty P.M.
Oh, here a second?
Hi, second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
Absolutely not. Well done, people.
We're adjourned.